Thank you everyone for joining us tonight, Wednesday, August 13th, for the Richmond Community School Board Meeting. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, what a nation under God, in the soul with liberty and justice for all.
Can I give out the three mission and mission statement?
Mission statement, Richmond Community Schools guides students on pathways of learning to a future of limitless possibilities.
Vision statement, Richmond Community Schools, a collaborative community nurturing mind, body, and spirit to prepare students for lives of choice, purpose, and service.
And next up, we have Celebration Secretary.
President Pickering, Trustees, and my assistant, Mrs. Bridget Hazelbaker, our Director of Students, Forward, Services, and Communications, join us here at the podium for tonight's acknowledgement of our honorees.
What's your line?
Yeah, please.
Thank you. Good evening. As you may see, we have some great adults here tonight with us. So I would like to have members of the Richmond High School marching band please come up so we can introduce you. We all did, and you guys did a great job. So again, can you say your name? They should be able to hear you. So say your name, what brand you're in, what instrument you're playing. Do you want me to go in, sorry?
My name is Taylor Marshall. I'm in the 11th grade and I'm in June.
My name is Nexus.
I'm Asia Lana, I'm in 11th grade.
My name is Adrian Johnson. I play baritone, but I have a trombone and sax.
My name is Chase Thursday Perkins. I'm in 11th grade and I'm the drum major this year.
My name is Jamie DeManis Cruz and I'm in 11th grade and I play tenor sax.
My name is Cheryl Newton and I play Cello.
My name is Brady Newton. I'm in 11th grade and I play trumpet.
My name's Kylie Ahl. I'm in 11th grade and I play the flute.
My name's Lauren Donovan. I'm a dodelet and I'm in 11th grade. And now I'm in 11th grade and I'm a dodelet.
So congratulations on your fifth place finish on August 1st. It was very exciting. I tried to get out there and take a picture of the glass and you guys were leaving and we were able to enjoy the ice cream social and everything. So what, can someone tell us what your favorite part of the summer band was this summer?
Um, I believe that my favorite part of the summer was the amount of connecting I got to do for both sides, actually, band and fella. Really just trying to get myself out there and trying to make band as enjoyable as we can get as our mission statement for this year.
Um, I think that one of the best parts for like, at least the, I mean, the whole band ended as like you were saying, would be, um, obviously at the beginning, it's hard to really put stuff together because you have like, you get it like little by little. But towards the end, like a week or two before state when we're just grinding it out and we're putting it all together, we're actually like able to put the show together. It becomes a lot more fun and it just, it just widens your mood, I think. And that's where it's coming from.
I agree with that, especially being an upperclassman and kind of knowing how it goes, to be able to show the younger students who are just coming into this, how awesome the music is and how awesome the program is, to see their faces light up when we teach them the music and they start to enjoy it. It's one of the best parts about it.
Well, not that I speak social, I was, it was interesting to see all the students that raised it, that they just, just ended 7th grade and going into 8th grade, or is that true? Wow, so how was that, having Dennis Bulldog or Heather Wildcats in your band?
I think it's a great implementation because they get to see what the high school band's like. And I think as somebody coming in, uh, into my 8th grade summer, I wish I had that, you know, because then I would get more of an idea. Because it is a little scary at first, but you can see them start to relax and it's just nice to have somebody else in there.
Now, those of us who didn't get to see the show, will you guys be performing the show again during football season? And when's that game?
Oh, August 22nd.
The 22nd, right. So, um, anybody have any questions for our band members?
I'd just like to say congratulations. I mean, what is that, 5th, 5th place?
Yes.
Man, that's bad. I just want to say that's awesome. I mean, I, I, I heard some rumblings that we should have got 3rd, but we won't go down that. First, maybe first. They didn't allow to count the points. There was a little discrepancy on that, so.
Percussion did get, you know, we got captioned. That's pretty cool.
Awesome job, but.
Now, will you tell us a little also about your teachers, what your career disciplines are? We also have information just to read. And then I noticed you guys had something help also across the country. There was a gentleman from Texas that helped out, right?
My partner, he's from, looks for. So we have, um.
Chris Frey.
Chris Frey. Wyatt Sinclair, Chris Butter.
Troy Strong.
Troy. He's from Alaska. So he comes all the way here from Alaska.
Now, what, what are the plans? I mean, how do you set forward for next year? I mean, how do you know what theme? Do you guys vote on that or do you just go with the teachers say? So have there been any hints yet? What do you have like February, March?
February.
Are we going for number one?
All right. Any other questions?
Yeah, just congratulations. I was in bands, I marched. I get it. You guys do a fabulous job. The state fair is always so fun, so congratulations.
And great weather. I hope you guys take sweatshirts.
I was not in band, Mrs. Hazelbaker. I still don't even sing well in the car for myself. At this point, performing arts is definitely not something that I, I possess, such talent. But again, as has been echoed and as I've shared with you all time again, the pride that has always fulfilled our town and our city behind our band dates back decades. And he's not here, but we all would be remiss if we didn't reference that member Simmons was a part of, probably one of the last championship bands throughout the state. But as member Elroya alluded to, I always believe we have the top band in the state. I believe you all received a standing ovation after your performance, one of the only standing ovations that evening. If that couldn't sway the judges, I, I have some conversations with the judges pretty hard for next year. But no, we really appreciate you all. You looked fantastic in your new garb, in your new, uh, band uniforms. Uh, you just again, you continue to be such an amazing spirit for our community and to Mr. Shipley, Mr. Merkham, Mr. Simmons, as well as all the others, um, who are behind the scenes having such an impact, thank you as well. So tremendous job. Another round. And for all those who may have seen Flash Gordon, AKA, AKA, Aiden Burkhart coming, he just joined us, uh, he also is a member of the band.
Just standing by third sergeant and all that, so Dr. Right here.
The tallest in the back. The tallest in the back.
All right, smile, once you're great. Thank you. Congratulations. You guys are free to go. Um, next up, we have public commentary. I know we have quite a few people signed up this evening. Um, so those who wish to comment at this evening's board meeting, the maximum time to speak is five minutes. Please keep your comments fact-based and within the time permitted. Comments are not to be personally directed or abusive. Comments recognizing the work of staff and students are always welcome. However, critical remarks concerning specific school personnel or students are to be made through the complaint process available in policy 9130. School board members do not respond to public comments during the meeting, but the board president will send you a personal follow-up email. Please state your name before speaking. First up, we have Sean Dingworth.
Good evening. My name is Sean Dingworth, Executive Director of the Richmond Art Museum. To be respectful of your time, myself and each of the speakers will be reading from prepared statements. I am here today with members of the Richmond Art Museum Board and art supporters to discuss not only the incredibly unique partnership between RCS and the Art Museum, but discuss our concern over the latest facility proposals passed by the RCS Board that will directly impact the ability for RAM to execute our mission and strategic plan of serving students. In particular, the proposed closure of the student entry to RAM and the lack of a long-term enhancement of the art department and the art museum as part of the future of RCS. From its inception, RCS Board has been charged with meeting the public educational needs of the youth in our community. And in our 127-year relationship, each successive board has explored new and innovative partnerships within the community in an attempt to enrich the educational experiences available. In 1899 until 1909, annual art exhibits were held in Richmond Public Schools. In 1910, Moritz High was opened and the educational value of art was deemed so significant that it provided a permanent space for the art galleries within the new structure. Again, in 1939, the RCS School Board entered into a storied agreement of mutual respect and unparalleled cooperation to permanently house RAM in Maguire Hall and in return for all art school programs to be of no charge to students. In 19, in 2009, the RCS Board and RAM Board signed a joint resolution reaffirming this longstanding partnership between the two boards. I encourage you to ask your school administration for this resolution and become acquainted with this agreement. We are not tenants and have been charged by the agreement to play a vital role in enhancing the quality of educational opportunities for students and the lives of citizens. This is a true private public partnership. RAM continues to fill our promise of having, uh, provided direct access to the visual arts for hundreds of thousands of schoolchildren. It has had a lifelong impact for students, many who have gone on to successful careers in the arts as depicted in the murals in Maguire Hall. For many RCS students, RAM is the first art museum they will encounter and most likely the only art museum a student will ever experience. This makes RCS unique among other regional schools. To our knowledge, you are the only high school in the United States with a private art museum housed on your campus. This has been and should continue to be a selling point for student enrollment. It would be disingenuous to call RAM a gym, but not partner with us or consider us in your educational planning for the future. As your partner, RAM has invested significant funds from donors for the maintenance and usage of the building to enhance the space for students and community members. In 2017, the museum raised 1.8 million dollars to repair critical infrastructure and to make the space a functional thriving place for students. Over the years, the museum has also partnered on numerous grant opportunities to invest dollars into Maguire Memorial Hall at no cost to RCS. The most recent example was with our assistance in receiving the redevelopment grant to update the infrastructure and seating in Maguire Auditorium. All of these investments have not only improved the structure's viability for the future, but it has led to significant growth in the museum's attendance, monetary gifts, and gifts of art. In short, the museum has had unprecedented growth, which benefits RCS and the community. In 2023, our educational programs and staff were recognized by the state of Indiana with the presentation of the governor's Arts Award. RAM's creative integration of art into school curriculum, specifically the groundbreaking exhibition, Amos Lemon Burkhart, You Miss 90% of the Shots You Don't Take, connected the RCS students to RAM by providing access to understanding issues like mental health and addiction. Engaging with the arts is a form of therapy, fosters social connections, and builds self-esteem. This exhibition brought to Richmond specifically for RS students, led to RAM staff being asked to serve as speakers at the National Association of American Museum Conference in Baltimore 2024. It is my hope that tonight you will have a better understanding of the partnership with RAM that is mutually beneficial to both parties. RAM has always kept the student population in mind in our mission and is the core of our strategic plan. The students are in the forefront of everything we do and our speakers will present those examples. I hope that you will consider how you and RCS at large view the Richmond Art Museum as you include it in your planning and reconsider the current facility plans for the secure interest and the lack of investment in the arts at RCS. Thank you for your time and for your support.
Hello. Dr. Wright, esteemed members of the RCS School Board, thank you for this time. My name is Lance Crowe, Education Director at the Richmond Art Museum. During my tenure, the student population has always been at the forefront of the planning of the art museum. It's a responsibility that we take seriously because of the original agreement between the founders of RAM and the school board more than a century ago. Whether it is the Art Is Multicultural Program, which served 2,200 K through 3rd graders this year, the annual All Wayne County High School Art Exhibition, highlighting artwork by nearly 200 students in the galleries, or the more than 1,000 RHS students who attend our Experience RAM exhibitions each winter. The museum is dedicated to offering high-quality arts experiences for students at no cost to them or to RCS. These numbers are separate from the more than 1,000 RCS students who visit the museum outside these mentioned programs each academic year. In 2022, RCS announced the Steam and Imagination Lab. It is important that students who experience the Steam program have a place to continue their education at the high school level with strong departments across the curriculum and unmatched access to the state's second oldest art museum. Especially as students find themselves with new options to focus on the arts, including the college credit course through our UEs passed in 2025 and the civic arts pathway at Richmond High School. Arts education fosters critical thinking through creative problem solving, interpretation, analysis, empathy, and improved academic performance. Students who complete four years of arts classes score an average of over 150 points higher on the SAT than students who take only half a year or less. Low-income students who are engaged in the arts are twice as likely to graduate colleges or peers with no arts education. The proposed secure entrance for RHS will be placed adjacent to one doorway which connects RAM to the high school. You may not know that the doorway in question is the main point of access for students and teachers into the art museum and is most used across all visits from classes that attend or participate in RAM programming. Such a decision would decrease the ease of access students now enjoy to the museum and will dissuade teachers from making plans to utilize RAM as a resource. This leads me to a simple question I posed this body. What is the RCS vision for maximizing the student experience at RAM? The current proposal lacks an inclusive vision for a stronger visual arts program or art museum at RCS. Secure entry as a proposed, as proposed is essentially a barrier between the museum and the population we directly serve. RAM consistently includes our student populations in its vision and planning. Shouldn't RCS do the same for its art department and the museum? We are hopeful for an alternative solution, which would benefit not only the students, but include RAM considering all possibilities. With the unusual number of current challenges and problems we now face in public education, RAM has always been a beacon of positivity and a worthy partner for RCS, its students, and the community at large. We hope today you see a renewed vision of the RAM RCS partnership and the great possibilities that grow from that for our students.
Good evening and thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. I'm Robin Henry. I am retired from West End Bank and Three Rivers Federal Credit Union. I'm currently at the treasurer of the Richmond Art Museum. And I also would like to say I'm a proud graduate of Richmond High School, the class of '77. I've been with, involved with Richmond Art Museum now for 15 years in various capacities, including the president during our 125th anniversary. And I've been active in a lot of not-for-profit boards in this community and throughout my career. And I have to say that my involvement with the Richmond Art Museum has been one of the most rewarding and meaningful. And I attribute that to the education and professionalism of the staff, the vision of the board, and the difference that the museum has made in the lives of our community members. And I have seen firsthand how art has changed, encouraged, and inspired the youth that attended our various programs and exhibitions. As a high school student, I was blessed to have daily access to the Richmond Art Museum. Although I was not an art student, I was able to go to the galleries, which opened me up to a world of exploration and creative thinking. That exposure led me to my personal love of the arts and thankfully, the ability to contribute personally and professionally to ensure that the legacy of RAM will continue. Both I and my companies have worked to contribute to the 1.8 billion dollar campaign, as well as annual campaigns. And West End Bank also contributed to a kiln for the Richmond High School students. Now, speaking as a board member of the Richmond Art Museum, I'd like to invite and encourage you, uh, members of the Richmond Community School Board, to join the Richmond Art Museum Board in strategically working together to chart the future opportunities we can provide for this generation and generations to come to actively participate in the arts. Uh, and we can accomplish this by being at the table together for enhanced and regular communication that will lead to meaningful decision-making for our community. You know, the possibilities are endless, but we've got to make it happen. Thank you very much.
Hello. And thank you to Richmond Community School Board for the opportunity to speak. My name is Chris Everard and I've had the privilege of serving as a high school art teacher in Wade County for 20 years. There's a quote about art education that's always stuck with me. "Art education helps you see the things you're looking at, hear the things you're listening to, and feel the things you touch." It captures the deeper awareness art brings, not just as a subject, but as a way for students to understand the world. The Richmond Art Museum has been an essential partner in bringing that awareness into. The Richmond Art Museum has been an essential partner in bringing that awareness into our classrooms. Their support goes far beyond field trips. They give students access to original works of art, foster meaningful conversations around creativity and culture, and provide hands-on experiences to build skills and confidence. One of the most important things and powerful things they offer is space. They provide a space for students to see their artwork displayed alongside renowned artists. That experience validates our students' efforts and helps them feel a sense of belonging in the broader art world. On a practical level, RAM has supplied our classrooms with high-quality materials such as paper, supplies, and custom-cut mats at no cost. This ensures students, regardless of their background, to have access to the tools they need to succeed. With Indiana's new graduation requirements, this partnership with RAM is more important than ever. Both my school and Richmond High School will now offer art pathways. These are basically graduation tracks that students can follow and use their proficiency in art classes to show post-secondary readiness. While some students will graduate through dual credit, academic honors, AP classes, military and technical credentials, others don't fit those molds. For them, the art pathway isn't just helpful, it's vital. Right now, around seventy-five seniors at Richmond High School are enrolled in the arts pathway as their track to graduate. Thanks to RAM, they are receiving a richer, more meaningful education. They are learning from museum professionals, connecting classroom content to real-world opportunities, and exploring internships, all within their own building. When I was asked to identify critical community partners for the arts pathway, the Richmond Art Museum was first on my list. Their consistent hands-on commitment to our students' growth is unmatched. Having this level of cultural and educational support here in Richmond is a rare asset and one that deserves to be protected, supportive, and celebrated. I hope you can see the commitment the Richmond Art Museum makes to our students. I hope you hear how it enhances learning, and I hope you feel the passion we, as art educators, have in advocating for this essential resource. Thank you.
Good evening to all of you on the school board. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm Kendra Wickemire Beiser. I'm a retired Richmond schoolteacher and a community volunteer. Whenever I can, I also appreciate the experiences that I have had from RAM for myself and for others in the community when we've had the opportunity. I'm here to represent actually the students of RHS and other community people, the uniqueness of this learning institution, the appreciation for art education, and also to remind you of the commitment that was proposed and discussed with the Richmond Art Museum, also known as RAM. I'm going to relate to you an experience that I had last spring that was really very charming and overwhelming. Some friends and I had gone to lunch, and after lunch, we had decided that we were going to go to see the newest RAM exhibit that we had heard about. And we walked into the exhibit. It was in the Lingle Hall, and the artist was Constance Scopalesse, and she was the first time that we had had her experiences here. Her art was just amazing. There were three adults standing there, just awe-struck. Because there were computers involved, there was color involved, it was bold, it was colorful, it was kinetic, and it was mesmerizing. It was all mounted and framed and hung on the walls all around the room. And we were able to touch the artwork, and as we did, it began to change and created more artwork. It was just fascinating. It was such an experience. I've never seen anything like it. But during this time, the whole time we were there, students were buzzing in and out in small groups, one or two at a time, just to enjoy or to show someone this unique presentation. Look at this one. I did this one today. La 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 la. They just loved the exhibit and was very much engaged with what they were doing and drawn to it. They loved it. Some came between classes for just a quick look, some said that they had heard about it and wanted to try it and to see it, and others wanted to experience something different from what they thought of traditional art concepts. My friends and I loved watching their excitement. We loved and enjoyed it ourselves. So it didn't matter what age you were, you were drawn into the art. And by the way, those students, every one of them, came through the doors that enter into the art museum. For the past two years, I have helped as a leader for the Art Is program that goes into the schools from RAM. The students are in grades K through three, and they are the beneficiaries of the in-class programs. We are welcomed into the schools. We learn about art and cultural concepts together. We get an excited reception every time we come. They announce that we are coming, and then we tell them that they get to go to the museum for free. You'd think we'd given them a billion dollars, but what they don't know is it's always free for our students. Many do come and bring their families, and what a delight when they return later as high schoolers to be able to say, "I've been to RAM before, and I can go anytime I want." Where else in the United States can students drop in to see and feel and experience art on the way to class or with their families at no charge? Where else can students come to learn to treasure and experience art when they arrive at the high school they know they have an art museum? There is just no place like this. Richmond High School is the first and only high school, to my knowledge in America, to have the art gallery open for students to freely experience. It would truly be a shame to remove an opportunity like this from our RHS students. I tell you this because I too was an RHS student and was constantly down in the art galleries as a student, just looking around, and no one had to tell me to leave, and no one could say I couldn't come. I tell you all of this because blocking that doorway would be a terrible mistake. Our students would be deprived of yet another area of learning that enables them to feel, to create, to express, relax, and just plain enjoy what they experience at RAM. This high school is unique. Why do you want to keep students out for such a wonderful learning experience? Please consider an alternative that includes the museum in the planning and leave the hallway open for the students to come into the art museum. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to you.
Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity to speak with you. My name is Kathy Gerton, and I'm the retired chancellor of IU East and a Richmond resident. I'm also a Richmond Art Museum Board member and an amateur artist myself. I've been involved with RAM since I moved to Richmond more than twelve years ago from Monterey, California. The fact that Richmond has a thriving art museum and arts community is one of the factors that affected my decision to accept the job at IU East and relocate to Richmond. I joined the RAM Board shortly after arriving and served three consecutive terms for a total of nine years. After my required one-year break from the Board, I rejoined and am now in my fourth term. As you can tell, I'm dedicated to RAM. As an educator and artist myself, RAM's focus on education is particularly near and dear to my heart. As chancellor, I was delighted to begin the highly successful pallet-to-pallet joint fundraiser between the two organizations. One of the things I love about Richmond is the way that various organizations, entities in our community work together. The longstanding partnership between RHS and RAM is a shining example of how our community thrives when we collaborate. On a more personal note, when I was in high school, I have to say that the art room at my school was so important to me. It was a place where I could fit in and could immerse myself in art. I can't imagine what the impact on me would have been if I had been able to access an art museum directly from my high school, as is the case with RHS and RAM. Who knows? I might have gone into art as a career, as many graduates from RHS have done, including Tim Phelps, who had a highly successful show at RAM earlier this summer. I understand that as board members, you have a lot of pressures from different constituents, and I appreciate the difficulty in making hard choices in these times. But I'm sure a solution can be found that provides a secure entrance to the school, but at the same time allows for direct high school student and teacher access to the Richmond Art Museum. The longstanding partnership between RAM and RHS is so unique, it needs to be celebrated and supported. That is to the benefit of our community and your students. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Kathy Camus. You may know me as a retired CIS coordinator at STAR. It is more likely you know me simply as Ike's mom. So we're not talking about him tonight. You can check them out in the Tierney Center. I'm really here to talk about my daughter, his older sister, who graduated in two thousand fifteen. She too was a state finalist. She was also a valedictorian, and she went on to be a college athlete at, within the Big Ten, not the SEC. When she was here at Richmond, it was rarely trimesters and grades were not weighted. So kids who were seeking STEM, AP, and honors classes could fit in lots of different other sorts of classes like art and not have to worry about their GPA. So she selected art as opposed to music, and she walked through the door of India Cruz Griffin's class and lit a bonfire that I am still paying for. Yeah, she was off to the races, and she took every class she possibly could fit in, as well as independent studies, and she chose India to be her sort of honored teacher at the end of her career here when we celebrate graduations, not a STEM teacher. And she went on to use the painting skills that she honed with India while she dove at the University of Minnesota, when she was in dental school at the University of Pennsylvania, when she was in her residency at the Air Force Academy, and then finally now at Dalton in Florida as a captain and dentist in the Air Force. So when I came along, things had changed as they have now, and grades were weighted. And kids who were seeking a high GPA were less likely to take options like the visual arts or band or orchestra. And so we kind of have this whole cohort of kids over the years that missed out, and I know things have changed, and I'm super happy to see that. But those kids will be okay. And you might say, well, that's great. They had hobbies. You know, Miriam had a hobby. She took it with her, and now she's an adult, and she's still enjoying it. And that is true, but it's truly more than that. And it's something that I personally want every kid to experience because I have one kid that did and one kid that really didn't. Because we all know that Art Is has been super successful over the years with the littles and the sort of expanded options of working with our staff, your faculty, and admin to create sort of curriculum-based programming that provides things that Miriam walked away with for free on a silver platter from India, and that, not the least of which, is mental health skills and tools that really served her through her super competitive athletic and academic career. But not everybody has to be Miriam. That's not it. There are children of all ills pursuing all different paths. And so the door that India opened metaphorically is very similar to the doors we have here between the high school and the art museum. And my goal tonight is just to encourage you to think about all the opportunities those kids have to keep expanding and working together with a little creativity, a little communications, elbow grease, which I'm really good at. Communication, cooperation, because in fact, we are Richmond, right? And as a community, we can do anything. And as I was considering this and thinking about all of this, I was thinking, you know, this gem has sat there for over a hundred years, and we've never not been associated with whatever high school our kids were currently going to here in this community. And there's no reason we can't throw those metaphorical doors open to the schools in the rest of the county who likely, in wobbly funding times, we all know, are upon us, may lose opportunity to art. Any kind of exposure, whether it's classes or the sort of integrated curriculum that they can just come in during the day and not have to have a dedicated visual arts class, but still get to have on a silver platter the same experiences and takeaways. Maybe they're gonna find like Miriam that they had an unknown talent that I certainly could not have helped her with. I cannot paint. So, or maybe they're going to see something for the very first time in their life because how many kids we know have never even left this community, ever, and their families are not likely to maybe take them to any sort of museum. So I just ask that you please consider those doors, that you keep them open and metaphorically open to the county as well as our own students here because I want everyone to feel the way she does, you know, well over ten years later. She's still using what she learned here, well beyond athletics and well beyond academics. So thanks for your time, guys. I really appreciate you.
Good evening. I appreciate your time and the opportunity to speak with you today. My name is Jennifer Lewis, and I work at Earlham College. I've also had the privilege to serve as a member of RAM's Board of Trustees for the last four years. When I moved to Richmond over twenty-three years ago, I was drawn to the Richmond Art Museum as a place that I believe to enhance my quality of life here. I feel incredibly fortunate that in a small city like Richmond, we have access to high-quality arts that are fingertips. My husband and I enjoy bringing our out-of-town visitors to RAM when they visit, and the feedback is always the same. They're astonished that we have such excellent museum in a city of this size and that it's free. The fact that RCS houses an art museum of RAM's caliber is truly a point of distinction for the school and something to be celebrated and invested in. In my work at Earlham, I have found RAM to be a valuable partner and asset for our faculty and students who engage with the museum in a few significant ways. Earlham's arts faculty takes their classes on field trips to RAM to explore the museum's collection. They encourage students to submit pieces to RAM's jury annual exhibition, which gives students a sense of how their creative work fits into a broader context. RAM provides impactful internship opportunities for our students to gain practical, hands-on experience with a professional arts organization. This collaborative relationship between Earlham and RAM is mutually beneficial and deeply appreciated by both parties. Similarly, RAM places a high value on its partnership with RCS, its teachers, and especially its students. From RAM's perspective, our relationship with RCS is not that of a tenant and landlord, nor is it one in which RAM simply takes from RCS and gives nothing in return. In fact, RAM's Board of Trustees and staff identified education as a core component of its latest strategic plan, completed in two thousand twenty-two. Our mission is to inspire a love of art through education, diversity, history, and culture. Of the five goals emphasized in RAM's strategic plan, our first goal listed is to educate all Wade County youth from kindergarten through twelfth grade on the history, cultural impact, diversity, and career opportunities presented, represented through art to inspire a lifelong understanding and passion for art. This strategic plan guides every decision RAM's staff and board makes, and we see RCS as a partner that is essential to our success. We believe that the educational We believe that the educational experiences RAM offers to Richmond students are irreplaceable. RAM desires a positive collaborative relationship with RCS that reflects the mutual awareness of our value to one another. We have left some information for you to read at your convenience, and we look forward to further discussion with you to the explore the ways in which RAM and RCS can be better integrated as partners. Thank you.
Hi, I am Team Washington, I am a teacher at Everland, and I am speaking tonight in opposition to your AI policy that you might be approving here tonight. I was selected back in May as one of twenty-seven teachers across the country as part of the Explorer Lab scholarship, and that has given me the opportunity to attend a research symposium on AI. That's why I could not be here at the last meeting to attend and speak out yet, just because I was on a plane back to DC. I'm speaking in opposition because I believe that your AI policy is very vague and does not go enough, frankly. I showed it to many experts, remember, at this symposium on AI, and quite frankly, they were pretty insulted by this policy. And I like the fact that John Weber actually voted against it. I wish others had as well, but quite frankly, as a teacher educator that uses AI, that teaches students how to use AI properly, I just feel like this policy does not go far enough. You speak of consequences, but what exactly does that mean? I just really feel like, as the person who brought to your attention back in November that you didn't have an AI policy in the first place, that since that conversation, no teachers, no parents, no students have been involved in creating this AI policy. And yet, we would be affected most by said policy, because we're the ones in the trenches using that technology. So, quite frankly, I feel very disappointed that we have been left out of the conversation. And I really, really hope that tonight, you please don't vote for this policy. Actually, let's table it for now, let's get these other stakeholders involved so that we can truly develop a meaningful AI policy. Thank you.
Hello, everyone, Jay Lee, our president. Siri, start time or set timer for five minutes. See if it didn't even work, I'm getting used to AI. Hey, real quick, contracts, alright, I know tonight you're gonna approve a bunch of administrative contracts and so forth. This is a collective bargaining year for us. Alright, we haven't had any collective bargaining in two years. This year, the state of Indiana has so graciously given us 1.6% increase to our budget. Next year is 0.2%. So, you know, I'm asking you guys to please table all increases in salary until we go through collective bargaining, because there's only a small pot. 1.6 is not a lot of money, alright? The teachers have not had a pay raise in two years, we've been frozen in that, because we did sign it in a storage contract, you know, two years ago. But, we would like to go ahead and just table all that, and let's get our, get our stuff together and figure out what's best for everybody, okay? The second thing I want to talk about is the RAM, number one, love the RAM. According to Western Wayne News article last year and so forth, they want to expand into our library and other places in there. And our library is so critical for our kids. And we use that facility constantly for all kinds of different things. And it's just not a library, we, when we have teachers out, we have, they go to the library a lot of time. When kids don't want to eat in the cafeteria, they go to the library, alright? When our special needs, our applied skills, young people, many of them are in wheelchairs and so forth. That library on the first floor is very important. Otherwise, we're gonna take these kids and put them in an elevator. I don't know how many guys ridden in the elevator, but, you know, me and another, another good football coach, Matt Beliega, get in there, we pack it. But how are we gonna get all these stuffs together? Get those kids upstairs to the library, and they use it constantly, alright? So, facility-wise, you know, and our rooms, they're built for that right now. The filtration, the kiln, and all that stuff, all that is gonna be is additional cost to RCS. And we only have 1.6% increase in our budget, alright? So, you know, that's my only thing on it, but, enjoy.
Hi, that, I would have said there was like the best rest I've had all day from teaching. So, I'm Robyn Nicholson, I'm the 3D art teacher at Richmond High School. Ron Dean, the 2D art teacher, couldn't be here, he had an event already, so. We conference, and we're kind of speaking on unity for this. I've been teaching for RCS for fourteen years, I've been at the high school for seven. I also served on Richmond Art Museum Board from 2018 to 2024, and I was really hands-on with a lot of those amazing successes and things that they did with their education committee, and just, I will just, you know, I 100% agree with almost everything that's been said about the art museum. So, what I'm kind of expanding upon, I had specific things written, I'm gonna paraphrase because a lot of this stuff has already been addressed, okay? So, for me, for all of us, we really, I teach 3D art, I teach seven separate different courses. Those courses have really specialized equipment. We have an event system to do soldering, we have a kiln, it has special electrical, we have all kinds of outlets, we have deep-weld sinks with clay catchers. I think they'll want for an hour about all the specialized equipment that we have. What I'm here to say is, those things are central. If we would move, okay, if we would be relocated, or some other sorts of things would happen to us, we need a seat at the table. I would, Ron and I would both like to see some sort of commitment to us to have some sort of substantial, specific input onto that, onto that, that we both kind of realized last year. It wasn't anyone in this room's fault, but six months in the Career Center, in a room that was a kitchen lab and a daycare center, that was really, really rough. We made it through, we still were able to deliver as high-quality art education as possible. It is so nice and cool now there with this heat, we are very grateful. But it also made us feel really grateful for a lot of the specialized equipment that we have in our room. The storage, I mean, my, if you come in there, it looks like a wood shop in the back of my room. My husband runs a wood shop, I partner with Nate Kindig a lot. We do a lot of woodworking in there, we do a lot of printmaking. I would like to provide still that full range of the metal smoothing, the wood, the ceramics, all of those things that are comparable to sometimes even some of the facilities at Earlham for what they have. I love a lot of facilities there, if you guys ever want to go visit their art building, it's wonderful, just built in the last few years. And so, I think what we, what we would like is input, okay? We would like to be at the table, just like some of the folks at RAM I've also mentioned. Chris mentioned a lot of stuff about the civic arts pathway, that's correct, we have seventy-five students. One of the things that happens, so you need six consecutive classes, so you can't just take Intro to 2D and do a cardboard project. You have to take those more advanced classes to fulfill that graduation requirement. This is catching up so many of our kids, just not, I mean, the kids that are falling through the cracks, the kids that need to graduate, or that diploma to do other things, the kids that are feeling like they're left out, they need to belong. It's really catching a lot of kids' civic arts pathway. Mr. Dean and I, our classes are incredibly full, like, those are so tired of. But I'm also happy, we have thirty-plus students in most all of our classes. We have over three hundred students come down to the McGuire Wing every single day. We have pretty large classrooms, we need the space. And if you want to keep, continue to serve that many students every day in our rooms, you're gonna need a significant amount of space with kids doing mallets and hammers and setting up their easel. There's, there's a lot going on, and we do need some space. I just also want to address some things that Mr. Lee mentioned. This doesn't just affect the art teachers, the proposed plan, the maps, we've seen the diagrams, all the things that came out from the school board last year. It affects library, radio TV, English, and especially the applied skills classes. I just want to say, this has been kind of personally stressful for a lot of those teachers, because we hear one thing, the school board, and another thing, our administrators, we've had so many meetings. A lot of the things, I think I was only privy to because I was on the board for the Richmond Art Museum, there was just that knowledge of what's going on. And, and I think that, I know you probably are asked for transparency all the time from every organization throughout the school, but transparency, a seat at the table, that, you know, those would be amazing things. Especially for the applied skills, I know a lot of them have very specialized equipments. They have bathrooms, they have changing tables, they have sinks in their classrooms down at the four corners area, a lot of specialized things, I'm probably leaving out a hundred things, but some stuff that really, really, really need, they fought for those things for over the years. And if they would be relocated, some of those plans don't have any of that in there. And I think that needs to be addressed. Those things are also very costly, I think Mr. Lee addressed some of the financial concerns. For me, when I heard, hey, we're reconfiguring the art department three years ago, my first thing was, okay, I will agree to this, I will, I mean, not in my hands, but I think that's a good idea. If our kids don't lose, if they're not losing those metal countertops to do jewelry work, and a future teacher who wants to bring out that old, you know, stained glass window frame for me or something. We're losing all these, these things, I do not want to be relocated and us not be able to provide those, because we do have an amazing art facility, it's one of the best in the county. It brings students to our school, it keeps students at our school. And so that's kind of what I really just wanted to address here. Mr. Dean and I are going to where, we love working there, we're both alumni. We will be there with the boxes after contract hours moving again, if we do move, and really trying to make this a strong program, because we love it, we were there in those rooms, and we really love out working here, okay? But thank you guys for your time, alright?
Okay, moving on. To consent items, that is item 4.01, approval of minutes, and 4.02, human resources, human resources and addenda. I make a motion to approve the two consent items along with the agenda. So, that was a motion by a member of Brunton, and a second by a member of Lori Aga. Any questions or comments? All those in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Vote passes six to zero. Moving to action items, item 5.01, which is cash tuition rates for out-of-state students.
You have the accept the cash tuition rates for out-of-state students as presented?
Second.
So, motion by member Stoltz, a second by member Brunton. Any questions or comments? All those in favor voting saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Vote passes six to zero. Item 5.02, administrator contracts.
I will move to accept the 5.02 administrator contracts as presented.
Second. So, motion by member Stoltz, a second by a member Brunton. Any questions or comments?
Yeah, I'd like to talk about it a little bit, just in light of what Jay Lee said. So, yeah, any thoughts or ideas in regards to tabling this until after bargaining? I guess that's my question.
What I think my question was, I didn't. Are these all the same salaries, right? They, you know, what salary changed on these, sort of just the contract? That was in addition to the two-year extension, so I just wanted to make sure, so.
So, there aren't any increases, is what you're highlighting?
Right, that's right, that's how I understood it.
And raises, they're maintaining what they made this last year, and we're creating a contract for them.
Right, yeah, this is very similar to what has been done in the past. And, it gave me an idea, I had to step away, trying to get the copy, so I didn't get a chance to hear all the book commentary. In short, this is exactly the same cyber scale as RAM previously. After our experience, this fall, as has been the past, been fun, yes, reaffirmed, both home, certified, classified, and agreed, that's the end, thank you, retro.
If we do, increases of that, I mean.
Yes, yes, yes.
And I do, I did want to call out, you know, I believe we did table the actual contracts several meetings ago, just to make sure we were on the same page for rights and clarity, because we had some good fight with principals. I wanted to make sure that it was clear and everyone understood what was going on. So, ideally, these, we would have had this all together at the same time, but, you know, we did, as a kind of push on that of, let's make sure we're just clear.
To answer your question, for me personally, I really haven't had a chance to really get deep into it. I know that this is basically flatlined, you know, as, as been in the past, and like, races. But we've had some, some positions that have been refilled or moved around since then, I just, I would like to, me personally, I would like to look at it a little longer. And I'm not saying that staff is not worth, you know, the approval of this, I just, there are a couple of things that I need to do deeper into, so, that's just, if I have a nay vote, it's simply because I'd rather table this for them.
Well, again, I appreciate the dialogue, and the request was to table all increases until after bargaining, which I felt like, okay, we need to, I want to make sure, but again, with there not being increases, I just wanted to hear that for sure, that there were increases, okay?
Do we feel?
I guess I heard it differently, I heard, excuse me, the request was to table all approvals.
Okay.
So, that's, that's why I, so, give you wrong if anybody else heard differently.
So, in theory, I mean, they have their contract extensions, pay isn't changing, so, for comfortability, it's over. You know, I don't know, I don't think it hurts to table it until the next meeting, is that an option? Does it, you know, what's the feedback on?
Does that not, so, we, we wouldn't have any principals or anyone under contract then? So they would be, they'd be kind of working with no contract?
We approved their extensions already.
If you have those, yeah.
Yeah, we asked them to, Stacy Mobbs, sorry, to register.
I'm just trying to enter the headline that that means.
Yes, was clarifying, what details?
Including it, included in that, yeah, there aren't any increases. It's just that, in my statute, if you don't, they still have this contract going through the next year, except for two people that actually are here tonight that were in.
In resources.
And the consent items for getting the resources. We've hired two principals in there in the audience today, too. So, their contracts are part of that.
So, I'm confused still.
Just that you're gonna go to, you're gonna have a two-year contract.
Okay, just that we were having the two, and then these are the two-year contracts.
These are the actual contracts that, that have the board members names on it that are signed.
Yeah.
Pass them out to the, to the administrators, they'll sign them. And point of clarification, that there was a question on it, too, there are two different types of contracts. There's a regular teacher contract for all certified administrators who have a licensure through the state of Indiana, and then there's a certified administrator contract for those who are not certified in the state of Indiana. So that's why they're two groups, and that's why we just.
So, if we don't, if we table these, then these are people working, aren't under contract then, correct?
Two of them are not.
Okay, but why do I, and then I have another question, because I have one pulled up, and it says that it starts July 1, 2025.
Correct.
So, this, this is for everybody, all administrators have received their contracts, but there, but included in those groups are the two new administrators that we have.
Got it.
And, I, yes.
So, was like two weeks ago, such as practice or what? I'm still confused on that, so.
I'm sorry, you're confused on?
I'm still confused on the difference between the two days, so.
The two different types of contracts, or?
Yeah, yeah, like, I mean.
So, so one, and these are all by statute. So, one, when you're a certified administrator, so you have a teaching license, you have an administrative license, any type of license like that through the state of Indiana, then the state says you have to have a teacher regular contract. And that's what they say at the top, and the state says that, that's approved by the board of the county.
The verbiage is different between last time and this. The verbiage is different between last time and this time.
Between what we approved before is what we're trying to figure out the difference.
Oh, before you, they were confused by the same thing, I feel like we're just doing repeat.
I think you're basically, as I understood it, you approved a blanking provision for two year administrative contracts. Especially, both. Class, uh, certificated employees who. Not quite everyone, but just about every position. Uh, as statuteually said, be basically the regular teacher's contract. As modified as necessary to reflect the administrative assignment. So these are the actual contracts that you're, you know, you're approving.
So basically, another question, I noticed.
It's similar to what teachers have, because they're, they have what's known as an indefinite teaching contract.
Unless you overtly take action not to renew. They're entitled to.
So there's two high school administrators that aren't on this week that was on two weeks ago.
Who are those?
You're kidding, no, they won't approve tonight.
New, that's new hires.
New hires, they're not.
No, 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 there was two listed last time, that's not listed tonight.
Okay.
Two high school administrators, last time it's not listed, so that's, that's where even more.
And I, I don't know, I, I don't know.
So I think maybe table, because there's so much confusion here.
Can you give me a name of?
Can I not?
That's fine.
Up here?
But it's, it's public right already, so that's fine.
Well, do you want to, we can also just table it.
I just feel like this is very clunky.
Need to. If you want.
I think I'm just beyond confused, I feel like this is clunky.
Mr. Mob, singing them the names out, and then we can table it till later in the meeting? And just maybe get some clarification.
I, I can look up Word docs, might have to leave it.
Yeah, okay.
There are Word docs. I can run through, tell you real quick, I've done, I've made.
Good, we're tabling it till later in the meeting.
Do we need a motion?
Yes.
Charity controls, so.
There you go. Okay. So.
And I apologize, just for a point of clarification, Mr. Mob. Uh, Mr. Mob, I apologize, as a point of clarification. Uh, such contracts in past practice would have been approved prior to the start of July one, if I'm mistaken, or just shortly thereafter.
Just shortly thereafter.
Shortly thereafter, which was the meeting which. Concept of the two year extension was approved by the contracts themselves.
And I think you also, because I was reminded, I'd forgotten, you also passed a. Motion, I think, authorizing maybe administration to make firms, quote, firm hire offers employment. So that, so that you may fully staff start a school, certain ratification after, after fact. And so it's, this is, it does make sense if you really factor it in, and I lived with it long enough, but.
Yes.
I, I understand exactly what Mr. Lee was saying, and when it comes to raises. Uh, in these difficult times, I think, uh. I think there's something to be said for making sure you're, will be secure guaranteeing your approach to that.
Well, let's just, if you want to withdraw your motion, if you can. Come back to it after policies.
Yep.
Before, before you do, I just want total clarification, as I had spoken once before. And that is, if this were approved, what it does, approve the existing contracts that we have, that we had previously approved of. No additional stipos or salary increases to anyone across the board. We would have to debate at a later time. Uh, excuse, excuse me, I said, we'd have to entertain that thought at a later time. Okay. I want to be sure of that.
Have a second if you withdraw your motion. I withdraw my second. So, her motion to table five point oh two administrator contracts until later in the meeting after policy. Sounds good.
I move to table five point oh two administrator contracts. At this time until later.
Well, second. Some motion by member Stevens and a second by member Stoltz. All those in favor vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. This will be tabled till later, thank you. Moving to policy review. Um, first up is. Well, or item six point oh one, which is policy twenty two, twenty one mandatory curriculum. Second reading and approval.
I make the motion to approve policy twenty two, twenty one mandatory curriculum.
Also again. That was a motion by member Brunton and a second by member Stoltz. Any questions or comments? All those in favor vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Vote passes six to zero. Um, item six point zero two, which is policy. Twenty four, ten audio visual, audio, video and digital reporting of meetings, second reading and approval.
I move to approve policy six point zero, excuse me, six point oh two, policy twenty four, ten. Audio, video and digital reporting of meetings, one second reading.
Second.
Some motion by member Stevens and a second by member Aloriaga. Any questions or comments? All those in favor vote saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Vote passes six to zero. Um, up next is item that's six point zero three, which is policy twenty four, fourteen. Reproductive health and family planning and human sexuality instruction. Second reading and approval.
I'll move to uh, move policy twenty four, fourteen reproductive health and family planning and human sexuality instruction to final. Uh, final approval.
I second. Some motion by member Stoltz and a second by member Brunton. Any questions or comments?
Yeah, I'm wondering whether we need to take this one to a third reading and have a deeper dive into it at a policy meeting. At, at the next final, we have once, but maybe look at it in depth further.
Yeah, I definitely agree. I. They're supporting in the policy that obviously were dictated by the state of Indiana, which. I don't agree with, I'm not going, I'm going to vote against this policy, even though we have to adopt such language. But um. I think, you know, hoping it be. Modified, it's modified, added, like. Draw arrows, make caveats, but yeah. Are others wanting to? Do more, more of a deep dive into it?
Okay.
Then I'll withdraw my motion.
I'll withdraw my second.
Okay.
So just move to there.
So, yeah, so I'll make the motion to move policy twenty four, fourteen reproductive health and planning and sexuality instruction to a third reading.
And I'll second that motion.
Some motion by member Brunton and a second by member Stoltz. All those in favor vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Vote passes six to zero.
Um, I think that's sufficient for the record, but I think the understanding is. Before it goes back for a certain reading, there will be a reconsideration that buys them. I mean, it's a little potentially a policy review session.
Yes. Um, up next is item six point zero four, which is policy. Twenty four, sixteen student privacy and parental access to information, second reading and approval.
I move to move policy twenty four, sixteen student privacy and parental access to information to final approval.
Second.
That was a motion by member Stoltz and a second by member Aloriaga. Any questions or comments? All those in favor vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay.
Nay.
Vote passes four to one. Uh, item six point oh five. Yes, which is policy twenty four, sixty one. According of I E Q team meetings, case conferences, second reading and approval.
I make the motion to approve policy twenty four, sixty one recording of I E Q team meetings and case conferences.
Second.
That was a motion by a member Brunton and a second by a member Aloriaga. Any questions or comments? All those in favor.
Aye.
Vote passes five to zero. Um, item six point zero six, which is policy twenty six, twenty three student assessment, second reading and approval.
I'm going to approve policy twenty six, twenty three students assessment, one second reading, as presented.
Second.
Some motion by a member Stevens and a second by a member Aloriaga. Any questions or comments? All those in favor vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Vote passes six to zero. Item six point zero seven, which is policy thirty two, twenty point zero two supplemental payments for teachers. Second reading and approval.
Make the motion to approve policy thirty two, twenty point zero two supplemental payments for teachers.
Second.
That was a motion by a member Brunton and a second by a member Aloriaga. Any questions or comments? All those in favor vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Vote passes six to zero. Um, up next is item six point zero eight, policy seventy five, forty. Point zero nine artificial intelligence, second reading and approval.
I make the motion to move policy seventy five, we will move on to artificial intelligence to third reading.
I'll second that.
That was a motion by a member Brunton and a second by a member Stoltz. Um, any questions or comments?
Clarification, we are moving this to third reading.
Third reading.
Okay.
So, yeah.
I think we just need to have a better grasp of it, of knowing what we're gonna do in the school districts.
And then we'll hit a policy meeting again then.
That's right, yes.
So. And put it at that point.
And there was also an addition to Ms. Washington. Um, there was a concerned community member that reached out to both Mrs. Brunton and myself, um, with several points. Um, uh, one being that it was too vague, I heard that. Also defining AI, um, what, what does RCS mean by AI? Uh, student consequences, um, were um, part of the concern. And then also just alignment with I D O E and U S D O E focus. So um, I think during our policy meeting, we can kind of get into that, flesh it out a little more. Yeah, see where we want to lean in.
I actually have an example, my company just launched a new AI policy last week. Perfect timing, and it, it's beautiful. Um, I'll share it with Ms. Washington as well. But uh, it, you know, I will pass it out to you all, because it does really hit those points that I know we've talked about. It was just sort of. That policy from.
It was itemized.
So vague, and this breaks down for each type of AI and.
I also do appreciate Ms. Washington's point of involving the people that are going to be implementing this policy. So um, it, obviously our policy meetings are during school, so it doesn't work for teachers to come. Uh, during that time, so I don't know, um, how we want to solicit that information. So, Dr. Wright, um, what ideas do you have, I guess, for getting that input from teachers?
We do, as you mentioned, solicit such information through our middle level leaders. Um, we do have forums in which educators can express their concerns, plus doubts, or questions, not anything. And or, to your point, read good. I like to meet in the evening when teachers can be a part of it. And understanding and knowing that we have that I have worked with or with. I think they would love to visit, have an opportunity to advocate, champion themselves. And in such a.
Yeah, we got to, you know, put that out to the, to the teachers, you know, Mr. Hazel Baker, any one of those firsts.
Especially she's got her wrist in the expert.
Right, yeah.
Like to be, important to have that included.
See what works best and.
Yeah, I agree.
Accommodate.
I think AI, I think AI is moving very quickly to the point where, I mean, it's coming, I mean, it's coming. So we've got to be. Ready to go. We got to have the input of the people that are specializing in those. As T Washington, some of, you know, Hazel Baker, and we want to make sure that when we land this, we land this correctly.
I'd like to add that our policy meetings are always open to the public, and our next one is September the ninth at nine AM. And whether you're able to attend or not, I think we can accommodate, we want to hear from everyone. I mean, you can email us, we read the emails we get from, you know, if you have ideas or concerns. We've just spoken about some that we received this week. Um, so there's ways to contact and, you know, that we can take your feedback into consideration also for the policy that we're working on.
Are these able to be done remotely? The policy meetings, the last two that I've missed pretty close, you know, it just takes one phone call from me every day to just screw everything up, okay? But I'd like to at least, if I can't be here physically, be able to. Be nice.
I'm sure we can.
I'm pretty sure we can. We can deal with Hazel Baker and technology, we'll figure that out.
I'm gonna listen and draw the one screen so I can take.
Yeah, just don't be driving, no.
I'm assuming we're on, since there aren't phones that we're taking, taking them less. There's no rules that we have to follow as far as.
No, it's, it's a public meeting, so you still have to have at least an. Majority.
Oh, present.
Present, yes. Physically present here. Which, wait, no, you, I mean, I, as far as votes, I think.
We don't vote.
Reach, but.
We're not, yeah, there's no vote.
Right.
So.
Okay, that's good to know though, so we can't have four on screen and two in seats. Okay, good.
Also, please one last. Can I apologize, I stepped out to get some guidance, I'd be remiss if I didn't. Remind our board of education also, our community, that just this past spring, we had members of our different. E-learning, it's very continued along with educators from original high school that presented to the board. Some of the fantastic things, dynamic things that are occurring, not only in the technology, but also in the space of our business. So I know that they provided, I believe, some funnel of for finance documentation for. At that time, about some of the safeguards and ways in which they have tackled this. And gotten tremendous response from our student body. I think just this past year, I'm sorry, this past summer, at the tech conference that's held annually. We had a cohort of students that held a session and had actually traveled throughout to the exact, some of the. Ways in which they've engaged and have been very successful with such, such technology. But yes, a deeper dive would allow us to cover that meaningful basis, throw that meaningful teaser that anyone.
Great, so um, all those in favor of moving policy seventy five, forty, twenty oh nine to the first reading? Vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Vote passes six to zero. Moving back to. Action item. Five point oh two administrator contracts. Did you? Get clarification on your question?
Yes, they were clearly added. I mean, when I initially looked, they were not there, but they're there, so it's good.
Okay.
Thanks.
I will be. How are you feeling?
I. As long as it doesn't involve raises, it's standard procedure that we do every year.
Correct.
So I'm okay with it, that's all, you know, because if it. My concerns was if it, if it involved raises, something that I want to discuss first, so.
I think it's same contract, I mean, for no raises, I think. Okay with approving it.
That's acceptable as well.
Okay.
No changes, it gives a stability to these, the administrators also, just what we want, even our, our schools.
Okay. So then, I would need a motion for five point oh two for administrator contracts.
So there, you're, you're good.
Yeah, I'm good.
I make the motion to approve the action item five point oh two administrator contracts.
Second.
Same motion by a member Brunton and a second by a member Aloriaga. Um, all of the favor vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Vote passes six to zero. Um. So, she will have a. So, I don't know if she will have a free uh, open forum, we're not actively on here, but does anyone that have anything they want to address, bring up questions, comments for open forum?
I, I was going to say, I think we should probably discuss for a minute RAM and our connection with it. Um, I just made some notes, first of all, um, I wasn't, maybe never had a discussion where this renovation of the secure entrance has affected RAM. So I wasn't aware of that, in fact, I even got out my plans during it to figure out, because we've never talked about it, nor can I see on this where it would affect it, so I wasn't aware of that, so it's good to be aware that there is an entrance that will be closed. Um, I feel like we've always celebrated RAM, um, and we've collaborated and we've had a strong partnership. Like tonight, that we weren't having that, but we do, and we've always celebrated. And so I appreciate the arts, as I mean, I'm a glass artist also and educator at I U V S who teaches integrating the arts to new teachers. So the arts are important. Um, so I'm, I'm glad this was brought to our attention and that we can now look at, you know, ways to work together. Cause I think we want to continue the collaboration, the great collaboration we've had, and we want to continue the partnership, however we can, and, um, we want our students to continue to have the opportunities. Um, I think that our, our plans for our secure entrance, there's, there's ways to make it secure, which is very important for our students and make sure that, you know, our collaboration continues. So, I'm, oh, sorry, no, I just feel like we're very flexible, we're kind of in a draft mode of figuring out all of these things, nothing is set in stone. Also, we have not, I just want to clarify, we have not approved of moving the library or the art rooms or any of that. Have we, we've actually, uh, the only parts or thing we talked about publicly, um, uh, which are what we approved for the bond, which does not include art rooms, does not include the library, um, so I just.
And also to clarify, I don't know that the, um, the, that RAM was, that was never presented to us, uh, RAM expanding into the first floor art room or first floor library. Um, the thing that was presented was the art rooms would be in the current library.
Right.
And then that library would be really located in the second floor.
Yes.
Original library, so that was a work session, um, conversation that we had. So I don't know if Western Lane got that wrong.
Yes.
Um, but I just wanted to make sure that that was, that's what we talked about, right?
I meant to follow up on what, what is better moved to, and just to remind our community and also just to continue to provide education, um, for those that were present and those that were maybe tuning in, um, in TV land during our work sessions. Maybe it was last fall or even that spring, it's all running together, but nevertheless, um, those were times in which throughout the course of the conversations of some of the party chess realignment ideas, they were left in draft mode. And many of those, all of those conversations were tabled with the aspiration of being able to flesh much of such thought and such concepts out during strategic planning phase one. And as we know, um, as we find ourselves in strategic planning stage two, some of these conversations will be rehashed. But to Miss Rotten's point, um, we have not had an opportunity at this juncture as a board to, you know, dive back into those conversations to arrive at conclusions and decisions, that's all still to be had. And, uh, as was alluded to during public commentary, just as we had during our work sessions, the public is always able to join those work sessions, have a table at the seat with, with us to contribute ideas and thoughts, comments and suggestions, uh, so as to have that voice. And we will continue to work alongside our, our RAM partners and also partners in the community to do what's best we can.
I was confused, that's not the only door to get into RAM, right?
I'm sure, no, it's, it's not.
So, are there still openings from the high school, even with the new plans to get into RAM? Oh, see, I got the feeling that it cut off all.
Oh, we were like cutting them off.
No, I know they could get it from the outside, but I thought, so there'll still be an entrance from in the high school.
Correct.
But not the ones that's used the most, is what I'm hearing.
Yeah, I, I, yeah.
Fall tour class.
And I tour, I tour, I toured with Sean and Lance, the ideas and, and motives behind RAM and what they've bring to the community and everything else. And I, I truly want to take this time to assure the public that our continuation, our friendship, would you like to call it RAM, will always continue in Richmond, because our partnership is key to the survival of some of these students and the alternative that it brings, the education that it brings. But I think what I really want to understand and make sure is that when we build this new secure entrance, that obviously we're not cutting off RAM. We, we are definitely doing what we can to assure that our students are safe, our teachers are safe, um, but also that our kids have a place where they can continue to do what they need to do. And that's perform, um, at the highest level that we provide, and RAM does provide those necessities. So I, I want to continue to make sure that RAM understands that, that partnership will continue. Um, but they also, we have to protect our students and that secure entrance is key and vital in today's society. Um, and, and I'm pretty sure Erin can tell you that if we have a secure entrance, I mean, that would definitely go a long way protecting our kids.
Well, and once, once we do revisit, once we get to that point where we revisit such conversations such concepts, and our administration, uh, is prepared and ready, uh, to provide you all with some, um, some options that we do explore that would alleviate and allow for, um, not only a continued partnership, a strengthened partnership with RAM in our Richmond area and most importantly, our students.
Yeah.
Which is the brain's point, uh, even with what has been discussed, yes, there is, um, two other, uh, alternative entrances into that area. Like I said, once we get back to the point where we can actually, uh, delve deep, as you all mentioned, and make deeper dives in this idea, uh, our administration is prepared to present more information that will help, uh, not only secure our facilities, both faculty staff, students and visiting state homes, but also continue to offer, uh, with no other school in the country, I'm biased, but northern state of the country, uh, is, is able to offer with what RAM provides.
Yeah, we should definitely utilize that, I don't recall any discussion of anyone wanting to sever that in any way, so we're now pushing.
We want to build on it, yeah.
Yeah, there's, there's opportunity, I mean, I think I would like to even throw the partnership out and the vision for RAM to understand that there's opportunity even in the elementary schools, um, there's opportunities in the middle schools, um, there's opportunities to go fundraise and help Richmond Community Schools in this partnership and maybe build a, a early childhood center with the opportunity of having RAM arts part of that uh, opportunity, I mean, that would be a great collaboration with partnerships with business communities. But I also know that as, as I continue this, in this arts game, I'm an early light, so, you know, I, I enjoy the, I enjoy the arts. But it is, it is, is, I, I've never discussed severing any type of relation, that it is, I, I, I would say not even the thought in my mind, um, and the opportunities that RAM brings, not just for this, our students, our teachers, faculty, um, but the community, I mean, where can you go, go tour some art for free?
And just as I had mentioned with regard to the artificial intelligence and work sessions and the ability for community to contribute, especially faculty staff, even with this conversation, once we revisit and move to those work sessions about those of these and about, uh, just be aligned with security RAM, the RAM community will also be welcome to, to our tables as, as it has been in the past.
I think this board historically, in, in the times that I've been on it, when it comes to any discussion of renovating Richmond High School facility itself, we've always carefully taken into consideration, uh, uh, the significance of having Maguire Hall and ultimately RAM, um, Maguire Hall being, being open December seventh nineteen forty one, and then the addition to RAM and everything else, the importance of that is as important as any other part, including the Tyrion Center, forgive me, or anything else involved with that structure right there. And so if anyone would have the misconception that we would make a decision that would devalue Maguire Hall and RAM or certainly under a false impression, I, I just hope that they would look back on the previous meetings that we've had when it comes to renovations or anything else, that nothing has been mentioned from this board to diminish the value of RAM or Maguire Hall as it is.
Yeah, and I just wanted to say, it's, you know, a little perplexed because I don't want anyone to think that we sounded like we were severing tiles and I, like, don't withhold me, um, great, so, uh, you know, kind of caught me off guard, but and, you know, I hope that in this planning process, which yes, we have bonds arms, but that's, it's, we're still so early on what that looks like and there, there were plans circling around, well, I wouldn't even call plans, renderings. Um, uh, so that concerned me a little bit, people are passing those back because they were renderings, like, here's an idea of what we could do. We have not seen any official plan, um, so I think those conversations are, are still yet to be had for details of those little, those little tweaks and things that, you know, you don't really see in a concept drawing, like the actual three functionalities.
And from what I understand, um, and again, just, uh, most of you guys know, I'm heavily, um, associated with the art museum. I've been on the board for almost twenty years, I'm the current president, so very much associated with that. Um, the concern was after, you know, our last meeting and these were voted on and then, um, and the entrance thing was a surprise to me to, to be on, you know, like, what, what are we talking about, secure entrance and blocking up? So I think, um, from RAM's perspective, it was like, what, what are our options as far as talking to the board prior to the design phase, because we're currently prior to the design phase. And so that's, that's why they were here tonight, you know, to say, hey, uh, reminder, we're your partners, let's talk, let's collaborate, you know, we're, you're about to make some big decisions, we've already decided on the money being spent and, but the design is still in question. So that's, again, I, from what I understand, that was.
That's similar, like it's been sold smack, though, I think just the, the disheartening.
Well, so.
I, where that came from.
I, I do not know.
Dr. Wright.
I have tried, just FYI, I have tried to remove myself of, they had a meeting that I was not a, a, a part of, you know, just saying like, okay, well, you guys, but I did say, the most expedient way to talk to the board would be through com- public commentary, so that would be, and you have the right to do that, um, unfortunately, exercise.
I appreciate hearing and reminding myself of all the connections and the collaborations we've done and all the, you know, if a reminder was good, there's the history and something to hear from.
Yeah, and there, and there's some great people that I know that are on the board and, you know, going from Lance and Sean, you know, they were integral parts of my career. Um, and then Rob and Henry, she's known me for, I don't know, since I was the higher grasshopper, so, you know, from West End Bank. So my whole point is, is I, and then Kathy, I mean, she graduated by me with my master's degree at I U E, so seeing her, I kind of give her a little smile. My whole point is, is that I believe in RAM, I understand your value, we are in the rendering phases, we have, we are getting assistance from your team on what the best avenue and, and what Karen and, and McCurdy will decide. What's the safety of our kids, safety of our teachers, what's the best fit, best design for us to go forward? And making sure that not only are we secure, but also RAM is secure too.
I also want to just double, um, Rob Nicholson, who came and spoke on behalf of she and Ron, our art teachers, um, just, I would like to solicit their, you know, I would, you know, and she was talking about having the specialized equipment and the full range of what they currently have, if there is to be a relocation, you know, so again, that collaboration piece, I, I just feel like, let's get everybody at the table.
Well, I just do, it's two different things, because it's RAM, but then it's our art department, so.
But they work closely.
No, I totally understand, but it's also like those, yeah, they're not actually, to get two separate entities, so it's, you know.
And we do value our art teachers, I mean, I, I, I value, you know, to see the band, see the art, to see, you know, all those, um, teachers come up and, I mean, Fifth Place and Van, I mean, and the other art teachers and Mr. Dean, and I, I've seen those classrooms firsthand, touch and feel, I've seen them. And they do a fantastic jobs and to include people that want to graduate and be part of that, that's, that's amazing. So again, the value's there.
Yeah, interesting enough, I was trying to say, I think we said enough to let them know that, how we feel, that we're supportive of, so.
Well, yeah, I was sort of, to be close with, interesting enough, that has it, that because as a board, you all wanted to explore an opportunity for more of our community to weigh in on such decisions when it came to the bond, when it came to facilities, when it came to grade level reassignment, came to so many of those big ticket items that we were discussing fall of twenty three, twenty four, go over table to move into the strategic planning process. Had the board chose at that juncture to approve, um, which was recently approved at one of our last meetings, had you all chose to do it then, all these conversations and all of the same, what would have happened back then? The fact that you all wanted to engage more of the community to allow that many more voices to be heard and tabled to the strategic planning process. As land, that's what we offered to Mr. Uh, to member Stole's point, it first started with the simple vote. And now it moves into the design phase, which was what Mr. McCurry and our team had presented last fall as far as how the process plays out. The process is simply playing out as, uh, as intended, but to Mr. Stevens' point, yeah, we are looking to strengthen our partnership with our entities and special brand.
Okay. Moving on to review of upcoming meetings and events, um, our next regular board meeting is Wednesday, August twenty seven, twenty twenty five, five thirty PM in this board room, and then our next policy meeting is September ninth, twenty twenty five, uh, it's a little earlier, nine to ten thirty AM.
No.
Yeah, nine thirty. You're welcome. Uh, so it's a little bit earlier than our usual ten AM slot, um, so, um, uh, we will move on to, we did our highlights in discussion, right? So Dermot Bellringer, Dr. Wright.
President Figuring Trustee, and so I'm going to ask that Mrs. Bridget Hazel Baker, uh, please join us here at the podium for this evening's uh, Dermot and Bellringer, as she is making her way out, as we have done in past practice, we also have in our audience for the human resources report, I believe Mr. Moss, uh, referenced, but for the human resources report approval, we have in our audience, uh, three new members of our school administration. We first have, and I, forgive me, one of the three is not actually here, we first have, uh, Mr. William Woodruff, who is now the assistant, little assistant principal there at Dennis Middle School, so Mr. Woodruff, if you don't mind standing, that would be recognized. Mr. Woodruff is joining the community team there at Dennis, that as we know, uh, has been acknowledged and highlighted by the state. Uh, the current city principal at Dennis Middle School was the two-time, current two-time Indiana principal year for our district. It is in running for the second time, uh, for the state principal's year, along with, uh, Mr. Lawson. Uh, Mr. Woodruff is joining the faculty staff there at Dennis that continues to, to turn, uh, course, create, uh, special opportunities for our students. So, uh, Mr. Woodruff, uh, by way of Peru and a few other, uh, school institutions and cities, welcome to Richmond, welcome to Richmond Community Schools. The second administrator that, uh, is with us this evening is Mrs. Rebecca Harold, who, uh, is our new principal of Crestdale Elementary. Harold was previously there at Crestdale as an educator, she comes to us, uh, during a stint there in Northeastern Wayne Schools. And Mrs. Harold has been at the helm now for a few weeks, uh, she's still smiling, which is what it's all about. Uh, Mrs. Harold has her family with her and we, uh, we wish Mrs. Harold, you nothing but success as family. Uh, we, we've always encouraged you all to pull them away and force them to unplug and plug back into you all, because there's a lot of sacrifices as, as our faculty staff, definitely administration may. But Mrs. Harold, we're excited, uh, we're hearing great things, um, and, uh, I know Mrs. Hazel Baker has another, uh, bell ringer, but before she even makes it to that podium, we have some amazing IRE three score thing out that we'll be sharing with our community, uh, within the next day or two. But, uh, as Mrs. Harold and Mr. Woodruff and our administrators, our faculty staff, students stakeholders, some great things are going on in Richmond Community Schools. And so Mrs. Hazel Baker now will wrap it all up and put a bow on it with the bell ring. And so Mrs. Hazel Baker now will wrap it all up and put a bow on it with the bell ring.
Of course, we just had our birthday school on last Wednesday, great, successful Tuesday press and orientation last week. Boy soccer started, real soccer started today as well. And then also just wanted to do a small plug is that our homecoming parade is coming up on September third. So those need everyone to, so mark their calendars, brand day will be September fourth.
Do we, do we hear a board float, is that what I heard you say?
That's right.
There was participation.
This is gonna be my first.
I always used to have somebody behind my horse. So I think. I think one of our board members even has a vote that we can decorate there.
Oh, that's right.
Before, before Mrs. Hazel Baker, there you go, before Mrs. Hazel Baker returns, I also would say, we highlighted her and acknowledged with press release. But also we remiss, if I didn't reference, Mrs. Jenny, Jenny O'Waria was approved, she will officially be approved. As the director of Head Start and Early Learning. And just today, we met with the Head Start community, faculty and staff, the current Head Start here in Wayne County. A very positive, informative, productive meeting, we were able to test out some of the anxieties that may have been created earlier this morning. To assure them that we, as Richmond Community Schools, are going to welcome them into our family, selfless service for students.
I also just would like to plug too, our family liaisons in our buildings are doing great as well. They've been accepted by their staff, really joining the team and helping our community with the kids a lot, so thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hazel Baker.
Great, making your journey.